2:30, it's on your calendar.
2:30, it's today.
Yes.
Um, man, they're right. Yep.
I'm just living the dream.
I know, I see you.
A dog that speaks with door balls.
Good mo— Good morning. I apologize, we had a few little blurbs till we could get ourselves on air. This is the meeting of the Bucks County Commissioners, November 20th, 2024. Let's begin by uniting in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay, we will begin this meeting, as we always do, with our employee recognition. We're very excited for everyone to be here today so that we can recognize them for years of service. And our first person today is Nicholas W. Franklin from Juvenile Probation and Parole. And we congratulate you for 20 years. I'm going to take a good picture. Thank you. And next, we have Karen Mary Stubling Robos from Children and Youth for another 20 years. Good morning.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Next is Melissa K. Leonard from Area Agency on Aging. Thank you.
Melissa, congratulations.
Karen M. Litzenberger from Nishamani Manor. Karen here. We will make sure that it gets to her, thank you. And Crystal L. Carey from Adult Probation and Parole, 20 years. Thank you. Wait, come on back. Come back. There are several employees who I'd like to just read their names, they weren't able to make it today, for 20 years. Paul J. DeFranco from Children and Youth. McGee Antoine from Nishamani Manor Health Services. Roseanne T. St. Louis from Nishamani Manor Health Services. And for 30 years with the county, Gloria J. Williams, also from Nishamani Manor, and Zorato Sota from Health Services. We congratulate all of them. Our next item is that it is Hunger and Homeless Awareness Week. Commissioner Harvey will read that proclamation, and then the Bucks County Opportunity Council and some others are here to talk to us.
Okay, thank you. Whereas each year, leading up to Thanksgiving, the National Coalition for the Homeless and the National Student Campaign Against Hunger and Homelessness sponsor National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week to educate the public on the causes of hunger and homelessness and to promote support for homeless assistance services and community food banks. And whereas for many years, the Bucks County Housing Link partners have conducted activities, fundraising efforts, and volunteer information sessions to acknowledge the importance of National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. And whereas the Housing Link, composed of organizations including Bucks County Opportunity Council, United Way of Bucks County, YWCA Bucks County, and Family Services Association of Bucks County, work year-round to help those in need of food and shelter. And whereas the Housing Link's mission is to prevent and eliminate homelessness across Bucks County, as every resident deserves access to safe, affordable housing and the opportunity to attain economic self-sufficiency. Now, therefore, do we, the Bucks County Board of Commissioners, hereby proclaim November 17th to the 23rd, 2024, as National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week throughout the county of Bucks. In doing so, we commend the Bucks County Housing Link for its collaborative dedication to assisting the hungry and unhoused people in our communities and express our gratitude for their hard work. We encourage all residents of Bucks County to support their efforts in any way possible.
Thank you. And today, to talk to us about this is Nikki Farrier from the United Way, Ally Potenbaum from YWCA, Elizabeth Zindon from the Bucks County Opportunity Council, and, as I said, Erin Lucas. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning to everyone. We have such a spirited and excited crowd today. Thank you for recognizing Hunger and Homeless Awareness Week. All in all, the nation. As Commissioner Marsaglia said, my name is Nikki Farrier, and I am the Impact Services Manager for United Way of Bucks County. And we are really here to do three things. We want to raise empathy and compassion for those who are facing homelessness and hunger. We want to spur our community to action, action, on taking steps to help eliminate hunger and homelessness. And of course, we want to break the cycle. So I'm joined with two of my amazing partners, Ally Potenbaum from YWCA and Elizabeth Zabinden from the Opportunity Council. Next slide, please. So here's a slide that shows you all of the events we've had planned so far this week, culminating with our meeting today. But there are still opportunities to get involved, so please look at the flyer, follow us on our social medias, and get in where you fit in. And now I'm going to turn it over to Elizabeth, who is going to talk to us about food insecurity here in Bucks County.
Yes. Thank you, Nikki. So yes, I'm Elizabeth Zabinden, Food Program Manager at the Bucks County Opportunity Council. Just a couple highlights, next slide. Thank you. A couple highlights for hunger within Bucks County. So over 8.8% of those residents in Bucks County are food insecure, which equates to over 56,000 households or individuals that are within our community. And 59% of them are above or unable to receive SNAP benefits, so they rely heavily on our food pantry networks and all of our other free programs that we offer within the community. Next slide, please. So with those who are hungry, we try to really, we take pride in tackling and making sure food's available for everyone through having 70-plus food pantries throughout our community, helping get the word out about community meals, having our Fresh Connect program, and just so many more things. Next slide. And the last thing I just wanted to plug is, you know, right now, we're coming up on the holiday season, where people gather around a table and celebrate and hang out with their family and just have a really special time. And that's hard when you don't have the food or the income to be able to do that. So I'm just gonna plug our Thanksgiving food drive, where we are collecting the Thanksgiving meal kits, you know, to help provide and get those meal kits out to our pantry so that people can afford to have, you know, that lovely Thanksgiving meal. I'm gonna now pass it to Ally.
I'm a little bit taller, so I'll move it. (applause) Thank you. As Nikki said, I am Ally Potenbaum, and I'm the Director of Housing at the YWCA of Bucks County. And I wanted to, Elizabeth did a great job with hunger, and I'm gonna go into the homeless component. If you could go to the next slide, please. So this is just some statistics. In 2024, we did a PIC count. A PIC count is a measure of homeless people on a specific night to highlight patterns of housing instability. The 2024 Point-in-Time Count identified 407 residents sleeping in emergency shelters, transitional housing, or hotels paid for by charitable organizations. That includes 167, or 41%, living in, or sleeping in the Code Blue shelters, and 91 adults sleeping outside or in a place not meant for habitation. This is a 27% increase from the number of people that we counted in last January. Next slide. Not going through all of this, this is great statistics, please look it up on the Bucks County Housing Link website, but this is just some year-over-year data. But I did want to highlight some notable trends, too, being that there was a 66% increase in those reporting a serious mental illness. There was also a 50% increase of those who were reporting experiencing domestic violence. Next slide. Again, some more graphs, I'm sure they're lovely to look at there, but another highlight is just that with the racial equity. So racial and ethnic minorities continue to make up a disproportionate number in the PIC count, essentially meaning that these groups are facing higher rates of homelessness in comparison to the representation of the broader community. Next slide. Now, you're probably asking, how does one help? Who do they call? Where does the system start? So the Bucks County Housing Link with the motto of opening doors and ending homelessness is the central hub. It is a housing crisis response system for families and individuals here in Bucks County for, that are experiencing homelessness or at imminent risk. Through a partnership with public and private organizations, we offer help to people so that this encounter with homelessness are rare, brief, and non-reoccurring.
So I'm gonna close us out with a few more resources. The Bucks County Housing Link, their call center fielded over 43,000 calls this year, with intake assessments of those who are facing homelessness or housing instability over 12,000. The Bucks County Emergency Shelter, run by Family Services, has continued to experience a growing waitlist. Even though it is an emergency shelter, it is not emergent. You cannot be without shelter today and go into the Bucks County Emergency Shelter tonight. There are over 200 people on the waitlist to date for our emergency shelter here in Bucks County. But they do provide temporary housing, nutrition care for over 380 individuals. One thing that you can do to get involved is volunteer. You can donate. You can put your money and your time and your heart into helping us, this Housing Link Continuum Partnership, work with those and support those who are food insecure and housing insecure. Another thing you can do is educate. Come out to events like this, public meetings, public events, anything you can do to educate yourself, you can then spread that to your neighbors, and we can all collectively raise awareness on the importance of eradicating hunger and homelessness in Bucks County. Thank you.
Thank you. (applause) Do you wanna, do you wanna take a picture? Do you wanna take a picture first, and then we can...
It's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us today.
Hi, Kristen. I had all these good people. Good job, good job.
Commissioner DeGeralmo asked if he could make a comment, so sure.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What a wonderful presentation, and I've said this before, I worked 25 years up in Harrisburg, and sometimes going up there, other people from around the state think that everybody in Bucks County lives in a $500, $600, $700, $800,000 home. And that is absolutely not true. We have a lot of people that are in need here in Bucks County, not only with homelessness, not only with food insecurity, but other issues. They are just losing a job or a car breaking down from being in real trouble. I actually, I'll admit this, I have a daughter who, right now, she's struggling a little bit, and if it wasn't for the help of myself and my wife in helping her pay some of her bills, that there's a good chance that she would probably be homeless. So again, to all the groups and organizations that are not only here this morning, but the other ones around the county that help those that we have in Bucks County, and again, there's an awful lot of them, thank you, thank you, thank you for the good work that you're doing. You are like angels helping these people out. So keep up the good work, thank you.
I know you know that there was a line, so it was hard for people to get in very quickly, but we have our employee Karen Litzenberger here, and if she could just come up to get her 20-year bag and take a quick picture. Thank you. Okay, so we're moving to public comment now, and I just want you to bear with me so while I explain how we're gonna do this. We are gonna get everybody in, okay? Nobody's not gonna get to speak. (laughter) But you just have to work with me with one part, okay? We need, we have a very short agenda, it would probably take us five minutes. I need to get the public comment in for that agenda first, and we do have, we usually take 30 minutes, we have about 30 minutes of speaker. We will do our agenda in minutes after that, and then we will just stay and go right into something we don't usually do, another public comment. I have the list here, everybody is gonna get a chance to speak. I would say, because there is a lot of people, if you can be concise, that is always helpful so other speakers will get their turn. But just bear with us in that, and everybody will have their turn. I do want to just ask for my turn for a minute, if you would just bear with me, and I will speak as quickly as I can so we can move on. So I wanted to start by apologizing for the upset and the confusion that I have caused the citizens of Bucks County and the hard-working employees of this county and my family and those who share my last name. Anyone who knows me knows that I care a lot about elections, and I have been involved in them all my life, virtually. And like all of you and all Americans, I want this election and every election to be fair, to be honest, to be just, and one we can have confidence in. I'm not gonna hold things up when you talk, if you could just put them down for a minute, I'll be through this quickly. Last Thursday, when I spoke at the meeting that you're all here about, the passion in my heart got the best of me, and I apologize again for that. That was a hearing, and we were talking about provisional ballots. We were specifically talking about the fact that there were certain provisional ballots where a judge of elections did not sign and did not make sure that the voter signed on the outside envelope. To me, it was frustrating and unconscionable that we would have to take away somebody's vote, not because they made a mistake, but because of an employee, one of our members of, or one of the judges of elections didn't know what to do, or forgot, or made a mistake. That issue that I spoke on has now gone viral from my comments. It was genuinely not the best words, I would do it all again, I feel terrible about it, I should have been more clear, I, please, I will be more clear in the future. I am, thank you, I will, I will be done, and I mean, it is an apology, so bear with me, that's not like, I'm not saying anything against any of you. I don't think I'm alone in the frustrations I had that day. Many counties get confused and confounded by the Supreme Court rules because they have changed at different times. I looked forward to the court taking a stand on this, and quite frankly, that was about provisional ballots, and that court hearing hasn't even been held yet, it's today. And that has to do with the 207 provisional ballots that the judge of elections did not quite monitor correctly. What the Pennsylvania Supreme Court did on Monday was rule, once again, and one time they were another way, that undated mail-in ballots should not be counted. There were 407 of them in the United States Senate race. That clarity came because we rely on the court, and we will not count them, and we have not counted them. My comments were not about those ballots. My comments were about the provisional ballots. And even as I say this, I know it's confusing, and it's no And even as I say this, I know it's confusing, and it's no surprise to me that these issues have gotten conflated. It was my poor choice of words. They did get clipped, they were out of context, and they have been shown over, shh! They have been shown over and over and over again on social media, national media, and I have literally been contacted by hundreds of people. And I'm being honest with you, all of them involved horrible, horrible expletives. Many involved threats, not just on my life, but on the people who work in this county. The things that were said to members of my family and people who don't even know me but share my last name are horrendous. We don't have to treat each other like that. It's heartbreaking. Some of the things that people invoked about my daughter who died were not fair, and we are not going to do that to you. So I just want to tell you, it is, I have certainly heard from everyone. I apologize profusely to the employees of this county and to the people who were called in my name because all of that rage was directed at me. But I remind you all that we all say things that are out of turn. We all make mistakes. I made a mistake, and because I am an elected official, I am held to a far higher standard than everybody else. So to the citizens I serve, I apologize, and I will continue to work hard for you and endeavor to make, not make such a mistake again. I will also clarify one more thing. When I inartfully spoke and used the word precedent when I was talking about provisional ballots, I was referring to the United States Supreme Court and the precedent that has been lost on many issues, including Roe versus Wade. If you would just bear with me for one more minute. Unfortunately, unfortunately, I took my frustration out on the Pennsylvania Supreme Court, many of whom are friends of mine and who I respect and whose decisions are complicated, difficult, and important. We are all going to learn lessons from this new media landscape, and most of all, I am. I am a small fish in this big pond. I do not have a megaphone on Twitter or CNN, or I am not a Secretary of State. I don't run a presidential campaign. This is the only opportunity I have had to set the record straight. Thank you for listening to me. Today is the only chance I have to stop the snowballing, and I don't really think I could apologize anymore, but I am truthfully sorry. And now our first public comment. We are going to, if this continues, we'll just take a break, and then we'll come back in. But we're going to try to do it without taking a break, and our first person for public comment is Christine Heitman.
Commissioner, apologize. Point of order, as we, as we open the public comment period on agenda items specifically, I want to note that the commissioners had contemplated adding the burn ban extension to this agenda. The Sunshine Act permits there being late additions to the agenda where there is a danger to life or property, and here, there has been such a recommendation, and the potential emergency warrants the extension of that burn ban for the commissioner's consideration if you want to make a motion to add that to the agenda before public comment begins.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to adopt the recommendation of our Fire Service Advisory Board, our Fire Marshal, our Emergency Management Director to extend our burn ban for 15 days. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Or, excuse me, put it on the agenda. My apologies, my apologies.
Correct.
Motion is to put it on the agenda to extend for 15 days.
Thank you, Ms. Heitman.
Bob, remember that time when you didn't want me to speak, and you told me that the site I just signed into went down? You weren't banking on me emailing that company and verifying that, in fact, it did not go down. There was no site outage that day. Slick moves like this is your MO. I look at Diane, and I look at you. Diane is emotional and out of control. Is there even a meeting where she isn't calling someone names? How many times did she say, "Asking questions is a threat to our democracy"? I say, "Not asking questions is a threat to our democratic republic." It's Diane's big mouth that made you famous this weekend. I look at you and I look at her. You're a master politician. This is why you're her leader. She doesn't even compare to you. Last Thursday, when you were deciding that you should count illegal ballots, missing at least one signature, the attorney said over and over again that it is illegal to count these. Diane said, quote, "Precedent by a court doesn't matter anymore in this country, and people violate the laws anytime they want. So for me, if I violate this law, it's because I want a court to pay attention to me." You, being the slick politician you are, you didn't even say yes or nod your head. Your eyes were closed, and your face was expressionless. Bob, this was your opportunity to be a leader. You could have put a big brotherly arm around her and said, "There, there, Diane, I know you're very passionate about this, but we have to follow the law. You could have done this, but oh, no, what did you do? You voted to violate the law along with her." Diane's actually right, though. The law doesn't matter anymore in this country because people like you violate it all the time, and all we, the people, do is sit here and complain. Well, I want to let you know that I'm not going to take it anymore. I have decided to file a criminal complaint against both of you for breaking the following Title 25, Section 3050, Title 25, Section 3501, Title 25, Section 3510, Title 25, Section 3527, 52 U.S.C., 10308. Oh, and by the way, Gene, when they're arrested, we want an evening town hall-style commissioners' meeting.
Yes, it was Pat. I'm sorry. Come on. Yes, she did. And remember, these are all on agenda. This is agenda speakers.
I know, I'm speaking on...
On something else?
Not, was this on the agenda?
This is on the agenda.
Okay, then I'm speaking. First of all, I just want to say, I'm so sorry that I have to be here today in this county. In a day that our county is all over the national news again for voter regulations, irregularities against the law, this is not what our county wants to be known for, and I want to thank you, Gene, for at least making them try to get the law being followed, for trying to listen to the Supreme Court. You know, last year, we didn't have a decision by the Supreme Court. This year, before the elections, they told us what we could do, and we were one of four counties in Pennsylvania that ignored the Supreme Court. This is not what we should be doing as a county. It's really a sad day, and I can tell you, Diane, you told me that the tape was...
I need you to get on to the agenda, and then, or you can wait and come back later, but you have to stay with the agenda.
I guess I'm confused. I thought the lady before me was doing the same thing. I'll come back on the other, that's fine.
Okay. Cheryl James? Cheryl James? Cheryl James? Come on up, you can speak. Okay. Vona DiArmond? If this is an agenda item? Okay, I don't see her. Is Vona in here? I don't want to miss anybody who's in another room or anything. I'm having trouble seeing it. James Nilson on the agenda? Terry Karns on the agenda?
Not on the agenda.
Okay.
You called me, right?
Yeah, I did.
It's hard to hear out in the hallway. I do have agenda item questions. Vona DiArmond, Plumstead. I was wondering if the, under the resolutions, you could help us understand, under the agricultural land preservation, it's number C1, what's happening with this? Why, why is there land being exchanged or given up or something like that? That would be just helpful. And then, item 2C, I was curious about how people find out about these services that are available here. I see there's a family-based service, and wondering if there's a way to make some of these services more well-known for people who might need them? And then, under Commissioners, number 4, A and B. So it's, A says approved change of the Bucks County Title D ADA Coordinator from Danielle Lavery Esquire to Dr. David Damsker, effective today. I was wondering if you could explain exactly what that means, if it was already explained, apologies in, you know, previous meeting, but wondering how that affects Dr. Damsker's current title and things like that. I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about Laura Reba, Reiba, sorry if I'm mispronouncing her name, her qualifications for the RTK, you know, Open Records Officer, and why she's been chosen? And one more. On the last item, under regular agenda, D20. So I see the amounts of money being given here to different places. The James Mitchener Art Museum gets $50,000. I was wondering, is that a one, is that once a year? Where does that money go to? Why, why is it such a large amount? Thank you.
Thank you. Art Larson on the agenda? Just in case you can't hear. Art Larson, are you here for an agenda item? Okay, I don't see anybody on that. We're going to answer those questions that people just asked about the agenda right now. Let's start, pardon me? Yeah, with BC. I'm going to see if Rachel Neff, our Director of Human Services, would like to take that.
Thanks, Commissioner. So in our Division of Human Services, we have a website that people are welcome to go on. Our Human Services Hub has a number of resources listed on it. This particular contract is housed under our Behavioral Health and Developmental Programs Department. Schools are aware of these services, the individuals at the county, our partner agencies, some of who are here today, can make referrals to us. But if you want information about the services that we provide, our website, I think, is fairly comprehensive. Again, the Human Services Hub has a lot of resources listed, and if you want more information about this program in particular, feel free to reach out to me or our Director of Behavioral Health about it.
Okay, I'm going to ask Commissioner Harvey and Ms. McEvan to answer the questions about the agricultural preservation.
Yes, sir, thank you. The agricultural preservation, so obviously for decades, the county has set aside funding and worked with state funding, as well as private groups like the Heritage Conservancy, to preserve prime agricultural land in the county for the purposes of continuing agriculture and also making sure there's not overdevelopment. In this particular case, there was an agreement in place with an individual who actually passed away before the, you know, deal could sort of be completed, and so we're really adjusting things to go, instead of, obviously, from that person to the estate of that person. And so we have to make that sort of legal change so that we're now partnering with the estate of the person who passed away, instead of, obviously, the person themselves.
Mark, anything you want to add to that? Ms. McEvan? Okay, thank you. To the solicitor, did you want to ask, answer the questions about?
For?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Thank you, Commissioner. Two title changes here, the addition of a different ADA coordinator. The county's required to have an ADA coordinator, and the prior individual in that role left the county, and so that title is being changed to Dr. Damsker, and there will be no other change to his current role and duties for the county. And then, in terms of Ms. Reba being named as the Agency Open Records Officer for the commissioners and in their administration, this is a longstanding county employee and an attorney who's replacing the arrow who left the county.
Thank you. And then the answer to the question on the other civics for the Mitchener is, we usually do make a donation. This comes from tourism funds, which the tourism funds come through the hotel tax. The next thing I want to just make sure that is corrected on our agenda, on number 11B, it actually should say as a title, GDC IT Solutions. It says Global Data Consultants, but it's GDC IT Solutions. So is there a motion from the board to approve the minutes of the October 16th and the November 7th meetings?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve items 1 through 17 on our consent agenda?
I'll make the motion with the addition of the extension for the burn ban for 15 days.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
On our regular agenda, we have some budget adjustments, 19 and 20. Mr. Bascola?
Thank you, Commissioner, for your consideration today. Our adjustments, 19 and 20 for 2024. Adjustment 19 is for the ERT Department. As we transition to the new in-for applications and cloud-based services, there's going to be additional costs. That will be properly budgeted for 2025, but this will cover the additional cost for 2024. And in juvenile placements, there's additional placements for 2024. This will recognize the cost of those placements, the additional state revenue, and the county match to cover those placements.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve those budget adjustments?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Before we do the personnel ejection, personnel appointments, number 6 is going to be tabled. Is there a motion to approve the personnel appointments except for number 6?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Harvey, would you like to do the board appointments?
Sure, thank you. We have one board appointment. This is for a reappointment for the Bucks County Library Board. It's a three-year term that will end 11/1/2027. Ms. Mary Twiklinsky, make a motion to appoint her to a three-year term.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And under other civics, we have donations of $1,200 to the Bucks County 4-H, $1,600 to the Bucks County Association for the Blind, $4,000 to the Bucks County SPCA, $3,000 to the Coalition to Support, Shelter and Support the Homeless, $1,000 to Doylestown Fish, $3,000 for Foundations at the Manor, $50,000 from the Tourism Fund for James Mitchener Art Center, and $2,500 for the Peace Center. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Our Chief Operating Officer's report.
So I only have one item to mention today, and that is, today is National GIS Day. And for those of you that may not know what GIS is, it's our Geographic Information System. It is mapping and data analysis technology that powers a lot of the work that we do here in 911 Emergency Communications, Board of Assessment, Health Department Planning Commission, Parkus &amp; Rex. I know that they've helped the District Attorney's Office in many ways, and it is very important technology that we use here at the county and rely on every day. Our Solicitor's Office uses it as well, and we are very fortunate to have a team of experts here in GIS, starting in the Planning Commission over a decade ago, and I just want to wish them a very happy GIS Day.
Thank you. Our Solicitors' report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Lightning speed. Just one item to report, which is that the commissioners held their standing executive session yesterday to receive confidential legal advice to discuss pending and prospective litigation related to the election with staff and legal counsel present. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner comments. Commissioner DeGraalmo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just very quickly, this past week, I attended a number of our veteran events around the county, and I just want to continue to thank our veterans, the men and women who have served our country, and thank them for their service. I actually got a chance to, we had an event at Nishamani Manor, which is our nursing home here for all the veterans, and they were all there, and I got to sing a little part of "America the Beautiful" for them, so they were very appreciative of that. So thank you very much. And I see Pat Poprick down there. She'll remember when I sang that song at one of our committee meetings a couple of years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Harvey? Okay, we are going to move back to public comment, but I want to begin with Ms. Poprick because I had to cut her off, unfortunately, so, no. I am going to do you in order, but I interrupted her. Ms. Poprick, would you like to finish what you're saying? All right, I'm, pardon me? Okay, fine. Let me just, I got to slide down so I can make sure I get you exactly in the order that you signed up. you signed up. I'm sorry. Beth Curcio?
We've been called election deniers, racist, conspiracy theorists, liars. Did I leave anything out? We, the people of Bucks County, are fed up. Yes, you're hearing us loud and clear. You cheat and steal our elections. It's exactly why you want machines and mail-in ballots, because Bucks is really red, and you don't like it, and you can't win. Mr. Harvey, you confirmed in a prior meeting that you, the Commissioners, are following the UN Agenda 2030 for Bucks County, with you and other counties like Montgomery County disguised it as Vision 2040. Communism looks so great on paper and a wonderful utopia. We have told you before, we are not interested in being global citizens. We prefer living in our constitutional republic and being great citizens of Bucks County. I do recall you walked it back the following meeting, that it wasn't part of the UN Agenda. I assume your handlers had gotten to you. My fellow citizens of Bucks County, you have puppet masters sitting right in front of you. I urge all citizens to go back to your prior meetings and watch the skillful Mr. Harvey tries to gaslight everyone. That's exactly what Marxists do. I believe Diane was filing orders for Mark Elias, and she would do anything for the goal of one-party rules. Mr. Harvey, you mentioned before, we should be like Colorado, all mail-in ballots, and the government counts. Colorado's in not very good shape. California's in ruins. Check out our cities, especially Philadelphia, drug-ridden, crime-ridden. You just look at these Democrat-run cities. They work for us. You pay our city to work for us, we, the people. They don't deserve their salaries from our tax dollars, and they certainly don't deserve the pension on the taxpayer. Besides this latest crime they committed, crimes against humanity, they threaten the employees of Bucks County with no jab, no job. They shut down our schools when they were told it wasn't necessary, the children would be fine, which created so many more mental problems for the children. Now, of course, the schools need more money for mental illness. The Commissioners will not hold town meetings for we, the people. Instead, we have to go sit through this employee recognition, DEI crap, and so much more. We come here, missing from our families, businesses, jobs, et cetera, because we want to save our communities from the destruction of these Commissioners. We are fed up. It's time to take the county and the money out of the hands because these, besides being criminals, they just waste tons of money. They create the problems, they launder money, and they never solve them. It's time for the Commissioners to resign and to stop gaslighting the people of Bucks County. We, the people, will not accept your apologies, Diane. You shut us down constantly, you call us names, we don't get paid to come here, we have to pay parking.
Fran Haller?
I attended the November 14th meeting and wanted to address just the first challenge pertaining to provisional ballots missing signatures in either Block 2 or Block 4, had no signature at all. Your Solicitor, Dan Grace, per the September 2024 Pennsylvania Supreme Court decision, recommended to reject all of these ballots. Commissioner DiGra Alamo, thank you for adhering to the rule of law. Commissioner Malsagria, you had quite a lot to say on that first challenge, and Bucks County made national news in an embarrassing way. On November 19th, the Washington Examiner printed that you did not support breaking the law or violating the Supreme Court, that your comments were being misinterpreted. The article also said that you appreciated the Pennsylvania Supreme Court reiterating their prior ruling because it clarified the issue, and that's all you wanted. This is false, proven by your own statements. Before the vote on these provisional ballots, when asked if you had questions, you replied, "I may make a statement, but I don't have any other questions." Clearly, you planned to make your inflammatory remarks. Also telling is when you said, "If I violate this law, it's because I want the court to pay attention to it," adding at the end of your discourse, "I'll take it all the way." You also said, "Our law department's goal is to stay out of any court because that's what they're supposed to do, but we might, some of us might want them to go to court on this." Your Solicitor gave you clarity about the Supreme Court's ruling, and you and Commissioner Harvey ignored it. You wanted the Pennsylvania Supreme Court's recent ruling to be revisited. You didn't care that the Bucks County taxpayers would be burdened with the cost of this going back to the courts. Commissioner Harvey, you were also complicit in this malfeasance since you had seconded the motion to count these illegal votes. I'm just wondering, who did you consult with when you disregarded your in-house Solicitor's advice? Was it a third-party firm? Was State Senator Steve Santisiera, the head of Bucks County DNC, somehow involved? Those are my questions.
Thank you. I apologize if I'm saying your last name incorrectly. Fran Grow?
Grouse.
Commissioners, at the Board of Election Meeting on November 14th, you were advised by the Bucks County lawyers that Title 25, Section 3050, deemed provisional ballots that you wanted to count as illegal. The lawyer also advised you that the Supreme Court of Pennsylvania made the decision on September 12th. He advised you three times to reject these specific ballots. He also advised you to follow the law. Diane, you thumbed your nose at the voters of Bucks County. You blatantly broke the law, and Mr. Harvey, you chose to second that decision, so you also broke the law. As an authorized observer, we got to watch your staff work in pairs, opening and examining the outer envelopes that were signed. There were signs taped to the wall in front of these workers on Election Day, giving them explicit instructions on checking the dates and the signatures. They did an excellent job of following the law, segregating the envelopes that had issues. Unlike you, they choose to do the right thing and follow the law. We observed one employee inspecting the outer envelopes. She raised her hand when she found that there was a ballot with an invalid date on it. There was a tall gentleman who seemed to be in charge. He told her that the ballot was fine and that it was to be included in the count. He did this for several ballots. I believe these ballots would have never been segregated if not for myself and other observers who complained, forcing them to put these ballots into a segregated ballot room. Note, everyone in the future should wear a name tag, including their job title. Diane, now that we know that you fraudulently broke the law, I wonder, did you instruct this man to accept those ballots? Mr. Glaser and Ms. Fitzpatrick, it is against the law for you to represent the county. Now that the county has openly admitted to breaking the law, would you represent them? I believe it's time to do away with Act 77, all mail-in ballots and machines. These elections cost the taxpayers a huge amount of money, and as proven today, they are never free and fair. We've been called election deniers over the years. Doesn't it seem strange and amazing how we didn't win the down ballot again? We won elections in our local precincts where everyone knows your name and that you show your ID. This is the safest and fairest way to ensure election integrity. In addition, all ballots would be counted at the precinct level, and the judge of elections would bring the results to the main counting center, and they would all be added together. The election would be done by midnight or sooner, and this would restore people's faith in a fair and safe election once again.
Again, it's for Shell. The definition of election, according to Merriam-Webster, is the right or privilege of making a choice. The definition of integrity says it is the firm adherence to a code of specially moral or artistic values, and lists incorruptibility as a synonym. However, close to a week ago, we know Commissioner DiGra Alamo made a motion to uphold the PA election law and recent court ruling. Commissioner Marsigli responded with the opposite definition of election integrity that I just defined. We all know what followed, and that comment has now become the modern shot heard around the world. She was emotionally charged up, and we knew, most of us knew her intention, and I believe it was that we will not uphold the law, count ballots whether legal or not. Yesterday, I saw a headline that Ms. Marsigli said her statement was misinterpreted. I asked the room that was there, did anyone misinterpret her comment last week? Did the thousands of social media reports on that comment misinterpret your real intentions? Commissioner Marsigli's exact statement was clear. It told the world that the highest-ranking officials in Bucks County, whose job it is to oversee elections, was that they were going to act outside the law. Antonyms for integrity are evil, immoral, wickedness, and impropriety. We, the people, today have the right to exercise free speech as outlined in the First Amendment. One week ago, Commissioners Marsigli and Harvey exercised their right, and they blatantly told us that they would disregard the law. Because we have a system of checks and balances, the law prevails, and anarchy loses again. Many people over centuries have sacrificed and died for the God-given right to free speech, but our First Amendment doesn't just stop at speech. The other four rights listed also need to be unabridged. With the help of the press, word quickly spread, the people are here today, assembled, and rightfully addressing their grievances, and thank you for allowing everyone to speak. Today, we, the people, have the right to petition that the Commissioners resign. Why? Because they not only said they would break the law, they did. They used taxpayer dollars over the course of many days to commit a crime and count illegally-dated ballots. We saw the results over the weekend. Results showed that by counting illegal ballots post-Election Day, they could overturn the Senate race and potentially overturn other races officially declared winners on 11/5/24. Joseph Stalin said that many years ago, "Elections matter, but who counts the votes matters more." I'm glad Stalin wasn't around in 1787, when our brave founders penned the rule of law for these United States. Commissioners Marsigli and Harvey do the right thing. Your actions, both in word and deed, set bad precedent, which is what you stated was important, and now you're at a tipping point. You represent us all, not just your political base. You swore an oath to uphold and defend the rule of law because you didn't like the outcome. You decided it was okay to break the law. As heads of the Board of Elections, you also directed your employees to break that law. Broaden Liberties article on November 15th by Kyle Salmon said it best, "They all should
First of all, thank you, everyone, for showing up. We've been waiting for you. I've helped with elections since I got involved in politics the past few years, where I've gathered signatures, handed out literature, worked voter registration events, knocked on doors throughout Bucks County, helped work on local, state, and now have my first national campaign under my belt. This election, I called the Board of Elections to volunteer to work inside. I was virtually begged to work as a judge of elections, but with no experience, I didn't feel as though I would be up for the challenge with such short notice. We attended a large training with a few hundred people, and then I did a private one for Just the Machines. At no point was there training to fill out the paperwork properly. And Harvey, you had mentioned that it is not mandatory for the workers to have training. I don't understand that one. And I don't think we would need a million-dollar budget for overtime if the election went off without a hitch. With four years to prepare for this historic election, why didn't you have adequate staffing at the polls just weeks before? Was this done intentionally? The responsibility for this mismanagement falls on you, Bob, as head of the Board of Elections, and you, Diane, as chair and your fifth turn as Commissioner. And you have a degree in criminal justice, which I find laughable at this point in time. The clip of the last Board of Election meeting of both Marsagli and Harvey went viral all over the world, and to be quite honest, it's an embarrassment to this county and to this country. It has been watched by millions of people from around the world, and has been shown and talked about from every podcast, some major independent news stations such as Newsmax, and posted by Elon Musk, whose reach is unlimited. For the incompetence of cutting the lines early and the Levittown ballots all having to be adjudicated because of a typing error, proper training not provided to paid staff, and going against the PA Supreme Court order from the party that thinks no one is above the law, although you certainly thought you were, I'm asking for you both to resign your positions as Bucks County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you all for being here. Very important that you showed up. Hi, I'm Christine Figaro from Buckingham Township. A lot of wonderful things have already been said, so I'll keep mine short. How can the American people believe in the integrity of this election when these Commissioners promised to disregard and break the law? The answer is, they cannot. These are elected officials who openly and blatantly admitted to disobeying the law. How could we ever have faith in their ability to uphold the law again? The answer is, we cannot, and they must resign immediately. I wasn't one of those election deniers in 2020, but after seeing what has happened this time around, I think there can be no denying that certain people on the left have honed these cheating skills for a very long time before we woke up to it. Can you imagine an elected official being so arrogant as to think that they can break the law without punishment? This is such a morally corrupt thing to think. They believe they're morally superior, so when they cheat, they believe that it is actually for the benefit of the community. They are wrong. This experience is the perfect example of why we need election reform in this country. I'm a mother of four and four of my children. I will also say, no biological men should be in women's sports. Radical gender ideology mutilates children. Keeping pornography out of schools is not book banning. And one final question. I'm wondering why we are still spending taxpayer money to sue Jamie Walker, going on three years now? Okay? That's a big question I have, okay? Dear Lord our God, we seek your guidance and intervention today as we search for the truth regarding the protection of private and secure voting in our blessed country.
Pat Poprick, Buckingham Township, and I'm also Chair of the Republican Party. And I've got to tell you, standing here today, listening to all these patriots and looking at how many people came out, something's wrong with the way we're conducting the elections in this county. I was so proud of the Board of Elections staff and the great job they did, and Tyler Burns. I can't give them enough accolades for what they went through and what they had to do. But when this Board of Elections makes decisions that are nationally recognized, and we are out there on every media, and Diane, I will address, you said to me that the media, the excerpt that was out there was cut. I told you I would look at it. I looked at it from your website, nobody else's. It's the same. It wasn't cut or altered. It was not. I trust that you said it was altered. I looked at it, it wasn't. So let me tell you, what's out there is what was said at that meeting, and that's what's causing everyone such angst, that our county thinks they're above the Supreme Court. And I said, I thank the staff, and I thank you again, Jean, because you at least tried to get them to follow the law. We can't have that. There's enough questions about this election, all over the nation, there's questions about it. Do we need to be one of the four counties that are out there again? We had the debacle with the polls being, the mail-in, early voting, whatever, stopped early. We were on every network news for that. There's got to be grave debriefing and affixing of this mess, because I stood at that lower box office for eight hours. And to see people voting on a table with no dividers, no chairs, under an awning? It's incredible. This is not our county. Or it shouldn't be. So I ask you, please, follow the law. Listen to the Supreme Court and do what they ask you. I know Jean tried, but he had no support. This is not our county. At least, it wasn't. And now it's become the laughingstock and the embarrassment. Please, think about it when you make your remarks in the future. Please, think about it when you make your remarks in the future.
Douglas Marshall.
There is a silver lining here. Many people were skeptical about the results of the 2020 election, and there was a question as to whether or not, in some people's minds, whether it was fair and fraud-free, and there was always plausible deniability. But now, there really is no denying that the Democrat Party believes in power by any means necessary. And that is, and that is almost as significant a victory as the results of this election, if you supported the winner. Now, having said that, I just wanted to add one thing, and that is that I do appreciate your apology. I know in my life, I've made many mistakes. I regret them. I wish I could go back in time and change them. So I thank you for the apology, and it did sound heartfelt. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Pressler.
Bucks County has been in the news a lot this year. Earlier, we flipped Bucks County from blue to red, and for the first time in modern history, there are more registered Republicans than Democrats here in this county. Number two, voters were disenfranchised in this county, and in fact, I want to thank Chairman Michael Watley of the RNC and co-chair Laura Trump for suing to make sure that we had three additional days of early in-person voting, because voters waiting in line to do in-person, on-demand mail-in voting were told that they couldn't vote until 5 o'clock, that the line was cut off. So thank you to the Republican Party for suing Bucks County and fighting for election integrity. And now, here before us, it's on the world stage that we have a Commissioner, quote, by Diane Marsagli, "precedent by a court doesn't matter anymore in this country. People violate laws anytime they want, and if I," meaning Diane Marsagli, "violate this law, it's because I want a court to pay attention to it." Well, Commissioner, the court already ruled that undated and misdated mail-in ballots could not be counted. You knew that going into the meeting. And I want to congratulate the people of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. This speech I'm doing right now is going to be seen by millions across the country, the Commonwealth, and the world. And I have a message. Congratulations to President-elect Donald J. Trump, the 45th and 46th President of the United States of America. Congratulations to Senator-elect Dave McCormick, and we are not going to allow Democrats to steal this seat from us. Furthermore, congratulations, because we defeated Matt Cartwright, giving President Trump an additional seat in Congress. Congratulations to Congressman-elect Rob Bresnahan. Congratulations to Congressman-elect Ryan McKenzie, defeating Democrat Susan Wild in Allentown and Lehigh. And I have a message. Peacefully, peacefully, we are coming for your seat in 2027. If you don't resign today, I am coming for your seat peacefully. And Harvey, Commissioner Harvey, this goes for you too. You are complicit. Mark Elias and his cronies must be disbarred from practicing law in Pennsylvania, any of his cronies for the misconduct that they did. I want you to know that I am going to spend all of my time in Bucks County for the next three years, making sure that we take back this county. Thank you to every single patriot that showed up today.
Someone has the floor now.
Hello, my name is Candace Cabanas, and I was the Republican candidate from the Pennsylvania House District 140 race this year. I'm not here to dispute the results of my race. I have observed several things that concern me about voter integrity and suppression of votes at our government satellite office in Levittown before the November 5th election. First off, the office staff was unprepared, and while our local state senator and state rep of the 141st district were apparently telling voters they could vote in person all the way back in September, people were coming in too early to vote, verbally abusing and frustrating the office staff. I spoke to the sheriff deputies and to Maria at the desk. They were very frustrated. They were very defensive. I was simply asking how the process was going to go. They did not know. They were not communicated to how this was going to happen down there. So already, there was voters that were frustrated, staff was frustrated by this misinformation and the lack of information. The staff continued to deny that there would be, quote, "early voting," and when I asked what it would look like, the process, they finally admitted, "We don't know what's going to happen, but the Board of Elections would install the Dropbox on October 7th and send staff starting October 15th." I had already ordered my mail-in ballot, as my husband did. We dropped them in the Dropbox. We've promoted this heavily during my campaign. I've used social media, encouraging people to promote on-demand voting, because that's apparently the proper term, with a mail-in ballot to cast our votes in the Dropbox at that time. I have come up here to the courthouse. It is a 15-minute process. When I've come up here in the past, it was not that case at the satellite office in Levittown. I showed up on Tuesday, October 29th. The long lines and frustrated voters told me all I needed to know, that this was being mismanaged, and people were walking away, being turned away even to told, "Come back later in the week, and we'll try again." I had people walk away. They said, "We want nothing to do with this. We feel like people are going to steal our votes." That's just from the mouth of the voters. They did not trust this process, seeing how badly managed it was. I came back on the following Friday, it was even worse. People were waiting five to six hours to cast their vote. One friend of ours came down from Yardley, had a business trip on Election Day, and he waited, I think, 8:30 to 3:30. It was wild. Questions remain. Bob Harvey, you were quoted in August 2023. You told Politico that it was important for you to be elected because county commissioners control how you vote. So what exactly did you mean by that? On October 21st, the last day to register to vote this year, you also stated, "We are the biggest swing county in Pennsylvania, and Pennsylvania is the biggest swing state. So we are really expected to be sort of ground zero for how things are going to go." Sort of ground zero? Are you happy with how things went? Did you think it went well? I talked to handicapped people who had nowhere to stand, no chairs.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Mike Diorka. I am the Chair of the Warrington Board of Supervisors. I am present here today, representing our township residents regarding recent general election activities, affecting many of them on Election Day of this year. Voting in the American electoral process is the most cherished and valued right under our Constitution. Like many of our residents, I have watched our township in Warrington grow in so many ways over 30 years. I'm a lifelong resident of Bucks County, and I've seen tremendous development from lower bucks to central bucks to upper bucks. Like many of our residents, I have watched the townships grow in so many ways over a 30-year period. Voting was a very simple process, driver's license, signature, and a voting machine. Voting is a simple process, free of the current attempts to appease certain interests, and a belief that the process is fair and balanced as a result. Okay? By making things complicated, you make it unfair to many, because there's too many loopholes involved in a process. Today, residents run a gauntlet between both parties, asking for a vote. Campaign signs, some of which denigrate candidates, cover polling locations and often debates on where signs are to be placed, and a timeline when signs can be put up. Sometimes debates on who stole signs and the truth in signage. Compounding these issues for our residents are out-of-state influences by external third parties and our own lack of planning by our Board of Elections. Third-party issues surfaced for the first time this year, some paid and some volunteer, masquerading as assistants to our voting process for our residents. At times, third-party persons were seen with members of a political party conversing or handing out sample ballots of that party. Our polling places do not need to become sideshows under the pretense of assistance to the voting public. As Chair representing our township residents, I ask you, our county commissioners, to review these activities and plan. Plan, which is vital in any kind of operation or agency or organizational operation, a process allowing residents to exercise their right to vote without a sideshow experience. Knowing the importance of local and national elections can provide a meaningful experience and effective and efficient process at polling locations. Voters do not need to be inconvenienced by lack of planning and preparedness for large turnouts, as experienced this year, and the indifference displayed on occasion to the fundamental right. Judge of elections should not only know the interior activity, but outside activities. Our elections should not become sideshows as in...
Warrington residents, like so many in Bucks County, deserve the best action plans by our appointed and elected officials.
Thank you.
We ask your assistance in polling.
Joe Linus. Is Joe in here? Okay, I'm just checking to see if anybody's in the other room.
Good morning. I'll be addressing my comments to Commissioners Harvey and Marsagli. My name is Joe Linus, and I live in Washington Crossing. I am an elected judge of elections. I have served as an election official in more than 25 elections. Each time I serve, I take an oath to administer the election in accordance with Pennsylvania law. You take a similar oath to perform your duties as Commissioners according to the law. Throughout this election cycle, you've done a poor job, as demonstrated by the many comments here today. This past week, you violated your oath of office knowingly and willfully and against the advice of counsel and allowed for the counting of illegal ballots. Commissioner Marsagli had the audacity to say, "I think we all know that precedent by a court doesn't matter anymore." People violate laws all the time. And then you both voted to count illegal ballots. Thank you, Gene, for dissenting and voting no. If, as a judge, I allowed ineligible voters to cast votes at the polls on Election Day, I'd be promptly removed from office and prosecuted by the district attorney. The two of you make a mockery of our election process and take away the faith that people have in the process. You too should be removed from office. And you should be prosecuted. Do the county a favor and resign.
Rebecca Simmons, Morrisville Borough. Marsagli, Marsagli. The news reports claimed that you apologized for your behavior last week when you gave your rationale for ignoring the rulings of the Pennsylvania Supreme Court. And similar to your fake apology today, you claim that your comments were taken out of context. Cut me a break. We're not stupid. You may think we are, but we are not. You all took an oath, and you seem to have forgotten that. It is appalling that, as elected officials, Marsagli and Harvey, that you decided to count illegal ballots. There's something really wrong with both of you, and I think the majority of our county You, Marsagli, said that if you violate this law, it's because you want a court to pay attention to it. Well, congrats. You even got the attention of CNN. And that's not a compliment. You, Marsagli and Harvey, should be ashamed of yourselves and held legally accountable for breaking the law. You are both an embarrassment to our county, our state, and our entire country. I am calling today for you both to resign, and I ask that you do so immediately. And Marsagli, I hope you do. You can roll your eyes all you want, sweetie. I hope you do get the attention of the court.
I'm not going to say this name correctly, so I apologize from Warwick.
I'm Mary Vina from Warwick Township. And as long as you will not follow the law, we're going to keep on recapping every... My mic isn't on? There we go. Okay. As long as you're going to not follow the law, we're going to keep pointing out all the issues until you get it. You're not, we're not criticizing the BOE's employees, we're criticizing you. You are, you're their masters. They listen to you. You give them their marching orders. If you can't tell us the truth, why won't you let us have access to the data so that you can prove your points? I'm here basically to talk about two issues about the clearing of the voting rolls. One is dead people that are still left on the rolls months after they passed, years practically, and also out-of-state voters, where we have approximately 18,000 on the rolls as we speak. Through our efforts, doing your job, we have actually moved 2,000 off the voter rolls, because we reached out to these people and gave them the form to fill out that you require. Second of all, when it comes to the people on the voter rolls that are dead, you say, "Oh, we can't move anybody off 90 days before an election." Well, I have personal experience that that is not true. Why? Because in January, when I ran for Republican Committee Woman, I was given the walk list. It included my husband. But in March of 2024, my husband passed away in Philadelphia County. Did not... did not have an obituary printed, did not have a funeral home involved, did not file a form with the county to have him removed, and he was cremated in Montgomery County. Nothing to do with Bucks County. And yet, I find out in August that the BOE had removed him in April. How did that happen? How are Tyler Burns' hands tied of being able to remove people 90 days from an election? That was within 30 days of an election, the primary. And in June, when I received my walk list, he was off. Isn't that amazing? How did you find out? I didn't tell you until August, but you knew about it in April. How did that happen? Further, I have experience with out-of-state voters because my daughter used to live with us. But now she lives in Arizona. But she, in 2020, was still on the rolls, right behind my name because that was the last time we signed in. So I'm going to echo everybody else's remarks here today. You had $5 million to clear the voter rolls and handle this election. What did you do with the money? It certainly wasn't all for overtime. And by the way, I'm going to echo again what people are saying. You both need to resign now.
Carol Dubas?
Hello, Carol Dubas from Lower Southampton. Thank you for letting us all speak. I appreciate that. Commissioner Harvey, you led a protest against Senator-elect McCormick outside of the courthouse weeks before you would preside as chairman over the Board of Elections in an election when Dave McCormick was on the ballot. How does this not pose a conflict of interest undermining voters' faith and confidence in the election? As a citizen of Bucks County and a voter, I expect that our Board of Elections is run nonpartisanshipally. You are a disappointment. Your actions don't prove that you are nonpartisan as a Board of Elections.
Again, apology if I'm saying it wrong. Mike Foti?
It's Mike Foti, and I'm from Buckingham Township. And I honestly don't know what country I'm living in anymore. You made this statement, of course, you've heard it so many times tonight. People violate the laws anytime they want. And you said it so cavalierly, so arrogantly. Of course, Mr. Harvey voted with you. Can you look at me, please? You disrespected the other voter. Thank you. A little respect. You know, I agree. You don't get punished anymore. That's where the country is because of the losing liberal-left policies. One state steal less than $900, it's okay. I go to Home Depot the other day to buy a tool. It's locked up. I asked the guy why? Oh, they come in in shopping carts. They load it up, and we can't stop them. We're not allowed to do anything. They're the garbage policies you people endorse, okay? Oh! But you know what? If you're a conservative Christian grandmother and pray outside an abortion clinic, you get 10 years under the FACE Act. That's really fair, isn't it? So let me tell you something. I tried to listen to your apology because everybody deserves a second chance. And you almost had me till you arrogantly rolled your eyes numerous times. It's not hitting with sincerity here, lady. Now, I got to tell you. Thank God, on January 20th, there's a new sheriff in town. I know this pains you, losing liberals, but you're going to have to get some TDS training. It's called Trump Derangement Syndrome. Because there's not going to be any more DEI. There's no more men in women's sports. There's no more men in women's locker rooms. Can you imagine your junior-high daughter, self-conscious about her body, and she has to change or take a shower next to a naked man? These are the sick policies you people endorse. So that's gone. There's not going to be any more rapists and murderers coming over the border. And I just got word that the killer rapist, illegal immigrant, just got sentenced for killing Lake and Riley. See, that's something you should cheer for, guys, not just look at me. No more illegal aliens on the voter rolls. That was a great one, wasn't it? You're fighting to put them back on? That's just great. But you know what? I know it pains you, but thank God Donald J. Trump is going to reverse it all. And by the way, please stay with these policies because 80% of Americans don't want them, never did, but you guys are too dense to understand this country is founded on Christian values. Thank you.
Joy Ann Kenny Charlton?
I think the last guy was as strong as Scott Pressler. My name is Joy Ann Kenny Charlton. I am a new town resident. I am a wife. I am a mother. I am a lawyer. I am a first-time Republican Committee Woman. I volunteered for this past election. I believe in this county. I believe in this country. I believe in elections. And you have jeopardized all of that. Commissioner Harvey, you voted to allow the counting of illegal ballots and direct violation of the Pennsylvania Supreme Court's ruling. They admonished you once again this week, saying that you shall comply with the prior court's ruling. The Washington Post called your actions corrosive to democracy. Do you believe that your intentional violation of the law makes you a threat to democracy? Aside from the major concerns with the actions of this board and voting to approve the counting of illegal ballots in direct violation of Pennsylvania law and direct defiance of the Pennsylvania Supreme Court's decision and direct defiance of your very own solicitor's recommendation? Aside from the major concerns regarding Commissioner Marsaglia's appalling comments involving what I think we all believe was her saying the quiet part out loud, words that shocked the conscience of Bucks County, words that gained the attention of the national media causing embarrassment to this great county, words and actions that jeopardized and questioned the integrity of this election? I also have serious concerns with the other train wreck that earned national attention, and that is the on-demand voting process. Commissioner Harvey, on-demand voting is found nowhere in Act 77 of the Pennsylvania Election Code. This was a creation of the county, promoted by the county, and then not adequately staffed by the county. Hundreds of voters were potentially disenfranchised because of your unpreparedness and unwillingness to properly staff that process that you promoted. Your response was to blame the state legislature. Why is it that you are refusing to accept responsibility for the failure of that county function? Another abject failure. If I behaved in this manner, if I, as a lawyer, had followed the conduct that you all followed, I would have been fired. I would have lost my license. Maybe I would have been arrested. We're sick and tired of one side facing consequences for actions. Where are the consequences for your actions? Removal. Removal is warranted.
Agnes Morrison? Your time's up. Agnes Morrison?
Thank you for letting me speak. I am Agnes Morrison. I want to thank the Board of Elections for all the work they've done before, during, and after the election. It's a gigantic, big job. Bucks County is a big county. I have been a resident of Bucks County for 39 years. I raised my three children here. I now have grandchildren here. I have always been very proud to live in this great place. It's a beautiful, beautiful place. Prior to moving here, I served for nine years in the United States Air Force. I took an oath to defend the Constitution of the United States of America. I take that oath seriously. I am a proud American. Although I volunteer at the polls, I actually vote by mail-in voting. I started during the COVID pandemic. And I found that I liked it. It gives you time to study the candidates. It gives you time, especially on those off-year primaries when they have those tricky ballot questions that nobody knows what they mean, but they're constitutional amendments, so they really, really have big implications. It gives me time to figure out what the ballot question is asking me. I like mail-in voting. I wish the state legislators would look at Act 77 and update it if it needs to be because it is a process. You fill out the ballot. You put it in the yellow secrecy envelope. You've got to lick the yellow secrecy envelope and not make any marks on it. Then you've got to put it in the white outer envelope. You've got to sign and date it. People put their birth dates in. People put 1 instead of 11. They just make mistakes. So I don't think those voters should be disenfranchised from voting. I thank my local government, including my county government, for working hard to represent all of us in Bucks County. Thank you very much.
Calvin Hunsinger? Calvin Hunsinger? Let me just see if they're in another room. We'll go back if he comes in. Joan Cullen? My wish.
Actually, before you start the timer on my public comment, I need to raise a question of privilege. That's why I'm talking from back here before you start it. A question of privilege isn't a public comment. And I can still have my public comment three minutes. I need to raise a question of privilege based on your remarks that you made in the beginning. Okay. I'm going to raise a question of privilege before my public comment. Please don't start the timer because this doesn't count as a public comment.
Go ahead.
I came here today and I was going to leave myself out of my comments. I deliberately didn't put anything about how I was treated by this county four years ago in these comments today. But then, based on Commissioner Marsaglia's heartfelt comments about how we need to be mindful of bullying others and being kind and worry about what we say that might hurt them and their families, my question of privilege to you today is if you would like to apologize for what you did to me four years ago when you used a taxpayer-funded county website to say that I was hateful and to say that my comments were racist. Those... That statement you made is still on your Facebook page. The words hateful and racist are still attached to my name on the internet. They will never go away. So my question to you is if you would like to apologize and if you would like to commit to scrubbing that from every single place on the internet for me, perhaps pay for one of those services that will fix my reputation that you sullied with your harmful and false accusations about me. And I'll let you answer that question before I go into my public comment.
We don't answer questions. We just take non-mental.
Duly noted, Commissioner. Duly noted. So as I said, I wasn't going to talk about myself today because this issue is bigger than Bucks County. It's bigger than me. It's bigger than Bucks County. What happens here is going to determine what we tolerate with our elections across the country. And people have made a lot of great remarks. I don't really want to repeat. But I do want to say that we can't forget Governor Shapiro in all of this. He attempted to defend Commissioners Harvey and Marsaglia's flouting of a PA Supreme Court ruling. He claimed the ruling lacked clarity, and the commissioners were, quote, "Damned if they did and damned if they didn't count and complete ballots." Outgoing Senator Casey did his part to bolster Shapiro's dubious claim by filing a lawsuit against Bucks County for not counting certain ballots. Casey's lawsuit will waste even more taxpayer money than we already have. But I guess money's no object when the Democrats want to explain away illegal actions and change election results. But getting back to clarity, I'm here for some myself on exactly how little Commissioners Harvey and Marsaglia, Governor Shapiro, and outgoing Senator Casey think of the intelligence of Bucks County citizens. It beggars belief that the commissioners were confused by the decision before them. If they were confused, their attorney provided all the clarity they needed. They were told that counting deficient ballots would violate the PA Supreme Court ruling. Nevertheless, they persisted. When the confusion excuse fell flat, Commissioner Marsaglia decided to resurrect a go-to excuse from the Obama administration. She said her words were inartful and subsequently misinterpreted. It took Commissioner Marsaglia four days to come to that realization. Why didn't she realize it immediately? If Commissioner Marsaglia couldn't realize it immediately, certainly when she called me Thursday afternoon to respond to a message I'd left at...
John Salani? No! 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 Want to recess this? No. 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 All right. We're going to take a five-minute recess, and then we'll be back. So we are going to... We're back. Everybody could be seated. So two things. That is not a point of privilege, but we are going to extend time for you anyway to finish what you needed to say. We'll start with that. You have things written down, so I'm sure you'll be done. You can start.
Okay. I confirmed it before I came up to speak, but we'll go. So anyway, if Commissioner Marsaglia couldn't realize it immediately, certainly when she called me Thursday afternoon to respond to a message I'd left at... certainly when she called me Thursday afternoon to respond to a message I'd left at her office, you'd think she would have cleared things up then. She didn't. Instead, she said my opinion was priceless because I, quote, "support a convicted rapist." That sounds a lot more like defiance to me than someone whose words were misinterpreted. Finally, lest I focus all the attention on Commissioner Marceglia alone, I do want to say that both she and Commissioner Harvey should face consequences. In fact, I think his vote is almost worse. It's one thing for a person to put forth an illegal plan. It's another thing entirely for someone else to hear that illegal plan and say, "Yeah, I think I want to do that, too." Perhaps while we're seeking clarity on things, Commissioner Harvey should also provide his constituents with some clarity and an update concerning or regarding his testimony before a federal grand jury concerning government corruption and false township. We never really got a clear answer about his involvement in that. With the way Commissioners Harvey and Marceglia have conducted themselves in this office, it's left me wondering if Commissioner Harvey's past is affecting his present position.
This may be a mistake how it's coming through to me, but it says Lis Oysell. Is anybody here by that name? L-I-S. And it's... Iowa, they don't live here. I'll get them last.
My name's Lisa Boycel. I'm a disabled woman in Richland Township. I would like to say I don't...
I think she's having a voice problem. So just, everybody be quiet and give her a chance.
I am a disabled woman in Richland Township. I have been retaliated upon by this entire county, every official in it, for charging a man with assault. Now that I see the corruption exposed. The sheriff has illegally disarmed me as well. Now that I see the level you have gone to to break the law, to the point that my name is blocked from the district attorney's office to even get help. I have severe doubts that my vote was even counted. I am in your system in every area of this county. All my rights have been stripped and violated. You're aware, because I have emailed your office. This is not the only law you've broken. Also, this county needs to account for every penny of the American Rescue Plan Act money, of which I know my township stole at least a half a million.
John Keiburn. John Keiburn.
Hello, John Keiburn from Warwick. I'm sorry, Warrington. I know it's been contentious in this room here today, and I believe that everyone deserves second chances. And I just wanted to clarify. You said that you will work hard not to make such a mistake again. Did I hear that correctly earlier?
I really don't respond, but I did say that.
Okay, so you do answer questions. Thank you. I believe that your constituents have no more confidence in your ability to faithfully serve your position. When you said, "I will work hard not to make such mistakes again," unfortunately now, we here, you will work hard not to make those mistakes again publicly. For the last four years, a great many people from all walks of life have been saying, "Nobody is above the law." We know what your comments were. They've been quoted several times here. I'm not going to waste my time saying them again. Let me just say that if you truly do believe in what you said, I do admire your courage. We should all be thankful that you are saying them out loud. I also don't believe that you should resign. I think if you willfully and knowingly broke election laws, that anyone up there should be not resigning. They should be prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law. Thank you.
John Salani. John Salani.
Good afternoon. John Salani from Lower Mickfield Township. As a registered independent voter, let me first start by congratulating all of you for putting Bucks County in the national spotlight, and not in a good way. Let me also congratulate our Democratic Board members on being honest about your feelings towards the rule of law and the people of this county by showing publicly the hypocrisy you've exhibited in your so-called defense of democracy. The pure arrogance which this board has exhibited will not only cost the taxpayers millions of dollars, but will further degrade confidence in our election process. When the highest court clearly states that ballots that do not meet certain standards should not be counted, and yet you knowingly, openly, and willingly participate in election interference with little or no resistance from the minority member, you show your true unprincipled character and contempt for the electorate. The Democratic members of this board are guilty of perpetrating this farce and should resign immediately if there is any shred of decency among you so that our courts can begin to prosecute you for your actions. Compared to all of you, being called garbage doesn't seem to be so bad.
The next person is Beth Ziegler.
I had been called earlier and was in the hallway.
Oh, I think you are.
Calvin Hunsinger.
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I am a citizen of this representative republic, of this commonwealth and Bucks County. Those elected to govern are to serve all citizens, not party or political biases. In order to enter this building, I had to submit to the rules of the court. Failure to do so carried consequences for my actions. Supreme Court has ruled ballots must be counted in a certain fashion, a certain way. Dates must be verified. Signatures must be verified. Impassioned words once cast are like feathers cast about to the wind. They can never be fully reclaimed or gathered up. I respectfully ask you folks to follow the rule of law, the Constitution, and the rules of the commonwealth of the state of Pennsylvania.
Thank you. Beth Ziegler.
Okay. Good morning. I was born here. I'm Beth Ziegler, Committee Woman, Milford Township, Shelley. I was born here in Pennsylvania and lived here most of my life. We were founded by William Penn, who was sent to prison time in England for religious beliefs and why he founded Pennsylvania. There's more to it. It's a wonderful story. I've been an independent Republican all my life. That party most closely represents my ideals. But for 25 years, despite my efforts to be involved in the Republican Party, I was only called upon when presidential elections came around. So my activism today is a result of grassroots organizations. So I shout out to Reawaken America, flashpoint@govictory.com, and right here in Bucks County, Right for Bucks. If not for these grassroots, I would still be a disgruntled spectator when things like these happened. I've recently went to these meetings and have been attending and asking with the others for election integrity. We want transparency that not only paper ballots, hand-counted, and informed, trained workers and watchers can give. To these requests, we were dismissed by commissioners citing it would take too long, cost too much, et cetera. If the countries of Argentina and France can hand-count ballots and have same-day results, how can anyone believe that our county can't? I believe it's more "won't." As an independent Republican, I am asking again for paper ballots that are hand-counted and laws be followed. Laws are put into place so that there is a level starting point, just like any game played, Monopoly, Yahtzee football, basketball, baseball. In this world, there are rules to be followed. If they're not followed, it's the responsibility of the player, voter in this case, to know the procedures, or they are disqualified. Follow the law, represent all of your constituents, and may this be a turning point in your lives for start doing right and not patting us on the head and sending us on our way. Thank you.
Teri Carnes.
Are you Teri?
Everyone, my name is Art Larson.
You are on the list, but you're like a few more up. So we'll get to you.
Okay, so come back. Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Teri Carnes. I'm elected judge of elections of Hilltown District in Hilltown Township, going on 12 years now, which means I have had just about 24 elections under my belt. And each one of those, as was mentioned by a former judge, we take an oath to follow the laws of Pennsylvania. Once we enter the position of judge on that election day, we leave partisanship behind. It is not our job to be partisan. And that's one of the things I have to remind my team that is working that day, that you are not a partisan. If you wanted to be, that's another job outside the polling place. But once you're involved in the election, you must be partisan-free. The Bucks County Board of Elections is to be the standard that all of us judges are to look up to. You, above all else, should be following the rule of law. You, above all else, need to leave partisanship behind when you take on the position of Bucks County Board of Elections. And as we have heard, and unfortunately, as the nation has heard, you have failed that job. Above anything, you need to avoid the appearance of bias. Not just avoid bias itself, but avoid the very appearance. I have no idea how you will ever be able to get that back in the eyes of our electorate. Thank you.
Two things. First, my battery just died. So Ms. McKeavitt will begin calling names, but James Nilson, that's the last before my battery died. James Nilson. Pardon me? Is he in the other? Is there anybody else in the other room? James Nilson.
I am James Nilson, and I've heard enough spoken.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, thank you. If I mispronounce your name, please forgive me. Janice Charlton.
Good morning. My name is Janice Charlton. I'm from Mormonster Township. I'm an elected official. I'm a township supervisor. And like you, I took an oath of office. And the most important part of that was integrity. And more important than that was my oath was under God. I want to remind you of something I said to teenagers that I like to work with. So I'm used to eye rolls and attitude, so I'm okay with that. But I want to remind you that every one of us in this room live between the dashes. And it's how we're remembered. And I want to give you a pause to stop and think. The choices that you're making have a direct impact on the future of our nation. You have chosen to set an example for Bucks County that I'm deeply disappointed with. The next generation is watching closely. The children are paying attention to this election because they had an opportunity at school to cast their vote, and they did. The adults of this country, we cast our vote. I was a judge of election in 2020. You mentioned the preliminary ballots today? I know what happened to the preliminary ballots in 2020. You guys didn't care about those. You set them off to the side before we brought our regular ballots in and had them put in a white van that we all saw later on TV pull up in Philadelphia and get counted. Not acceptable, but you chose not to do anything then. Now you stand here and you say that you're above the law, that the rules don't matter. The children are watching. The legacy you're leaving behind is dishonesty. There's no integrity in that. I would hope that the two of you would take a close look at yourself and introspect at what you're doing. We, as elected people, are held to a higher standard, not only by the people that elect us, from both parties. We serve everyone. When we get elected and we swear our oath of office, we're no longer Republican, Democrat, Independent, Liberal, Conservative. We are for the people. We represent every one of our constituents, and you have forgotten that. Would you like your legacy to go down as a liar who doesn't care about the law and doesn't respect the voters? The people have spoken. The Republicans are in control right now. You're not happy with that? We had to go through the last four years of hardship and poor economy and have our rights not be appreciated. We've been threatened. As a township supervisor, I've been threatened because if I voted Republican. Stop being the bully. Start setting the example for the next generation because they will hold you accountable. Thank you.
Mike Wallowey. Mike Wallowey. Maybe say it one more time. Mike Wallowey. Okay. We'll call him again if he comes back, if he comes in. Okay. Carlo Gralletto.
Hello, thank you. My name is Carlo Gralletto. I'm from Plumstead Township. The people that spoke here before did a great job in explaining everything that was on my agenda. And my wife convinced me this is where I've come down through a very short agenda, right here. So she'll be happy about that. But there's a few things, there's one thing that disturbed me the most. The reason why Pennsylvania has the law about signing ballots, signed ballots, et cetera, et cetera, and why the Supreme Court came up with that is to try to avoid the debacle that happened in 2020. In 2020, you would have to be blind not to see the videos of ballots in Atlanta being brought from underneath the table after they bogusly shut down the ballot. When you saw trucks coming from New York City with ballots in them coming to Pennsylvania, you would have to be very, very upset. But here's the thing that bothers me the most. When about 1,000 people from Bucks County went to peacefully protest that, you, all of you, all three of you Commissioners condemned them. And basically, I find that egregious, which makes your actions of not obeying the law even more and more egregious to my way of thinking, and it's very hypocritical. Now, if you're going to come up and say that some people broke the law, I think there was about one person from Bucks County that was arrested for trespassing. The rest of them went there peacefully to protest what was happening, and these laws were put in specifically to make sure that that debacle doesn't happen again. Yet you try to violate the law. Thank you.
John Zap? John Zap?
Excuse me. I was number 27, and you called me on the wrong list, on the agenda list.
What's your name?
Cheryl Uzo. Cheryl James Uzo.
Cheryl James. From Horsham, so we really, just let me finish this sentence. We're not supposed to take comment from people from out of Bucks, so we'll finish Bucks first, and then we can get back to you.
You just took comments from five, six people?
No. Well, they all signed in from another township, so what can I tell you? If they lied, they lied, but we'll get back to you. John Zap?
Good morning, everybody. John Zap, Buckingham Township. Just wanted to start off with the quote here from Diane. People violate laws anytime they want, so for me, if I violate this law, it's because I want a court to pay attention to it. Well, you sure got the attention you wanted. Elon Musk, the wealthiest man in the world, reposted the video of you saying that. It has about 40 million views. And you're just making our county look horrible. It's an absolute disgrace. I never understood how corrupt Bucks County was and how corrupt the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania was until I saw Robert Harvey on the news blaming a lack of resources after the Bucks County Board of Elections was ending the line early to voters who sought to apply for a mail-in ballot on October 29th. Shortly after, the Board of Elections was sued and was found to be in violation of the Pennsylvania Election Code. I'm not here to complain about waiting in line for three hours to cast my vote. I would have waited three days to vote if I had to. But I voted the same way as I did this year, 2020. I waited four hours. And was Bucks County sued for violating the election code in 2020? I don't think so. Correct me if I'm wrong. So like, Robert, you're meaning to tell the people that a lack of resources is to blame? There wasn't a lack of resources in 2020 during the middle of a global pandemic? Like, all you guys do is blame. You blame the legislators. You blame Act 77. It's time to take a look in the mirror, take some responsibility. And Robert, you need to show some more respect for members of the public because you're a public servant and you work for us. I watch these commissioners' meetings, and the way you sometimes respond to people who don't agree with you comes off as very smug and condescending. Like, what is there to be proud of? I don't understand. You guys are doing an awful job and should just resign at this point. Like I said before, like, this guy over here's been holding a sign up, and that's exactly what you guys are. You guys are a bunch of corrupt tyrants. And you just need to do your job. You should just resign, though, and uphold the Constitution, not ignore PA Supreme Court rulings, and serve the taxpaying citizens of Bucks County. God bless America.
Art Larson? Art Larson?
Good day to all. Good day to the citizens. We're speaking up. It's long overdue. There's an old saying from what the Greeks say. For, how would you, how's it go? Incapacity is one of the worst forms of corruption, as General Grant said. Another one that was said by the Greeks. By indifference of good people, you would be ruled by evil. And that's what we're seeing here. This is a long issue, okay? I wrote a website, No Place for Corruption on this. For instance, Operation Mockingbird, that media is right there. Crime Magazine, read Race Wire, Part II. That was set up right here, right back to the JFK assassination. I know about Fox. I know you grew up with Fox on your lap. Fox basically threatened my life with the mafia, okay? So this has been going on for a long time. Take a look at that website. You'll see what's going on. As far as what the people are saying, this is just the tip of the iceberg. We need massive resignations in this county, and we need to get competency back into it. Done.
Teresa Nadler? Teresa Nadler? No? Okay, we'll move on to Gigi Rosenberg? Gigi Rosenberg?
Hi, good morning or good afternoon. I'm Gigi Rosenberg. I live in Lower Makefield Township. I am a mother of three and a grandmother. And I've come here today because I am absolutely disgusted, disgusted with what is going on in Bucks County. You stole it in 2020. You're trying to steal it in 2024, and we stopped you. And you all should resign. We are sick and tired. We are embarrassed for our country. We are embarrassed for our state. The world is watching. You are all felons. You deserve to be in jail. You deserve, you need to resign today. You need to be fired. We are your boss. You are a bane, a stain on this country. The world is watching. And in the great words of Donald J. Trump, anybody that cheats is going to jail. You deserve jail.
John Bataglary? John Bataglary? John Bataglary? John Bataglary? No? Going once? And that's all we have for Bucks County residents. You already spoke. We only do one public comment. Well, you can't. We don't do that anymore. We stopped doing that a long time ago. One or the other. It's one or the other.
Thank you. If I could. Well, if I could add. Thank you. If I could add some clarification. You're correct that the county used to have two separate comment periods, one on agenda items and one at the end of the meeting on non-agenda items. In January, so nearly 11 months ago, that setup for the meeting changed, and there was only one public comment period at the start of the meeting for both agenda and non-agenda items. At the outset of today's meeting, the commissioner indicated that because of the number of people that wanted to speak today, that they asked for speakers who wanted to speak on agenda items to be prioritized and to be able to speak before the business of the commissioner meeting was underway. And that's why those people spoke at the beginning. And then the commissioners are continuing the public comment period at the end of the meeting today. That doesn't reflect that people get two opportunities to speak, but more, it was an effort to prioritize those who spoke on agenda so they would have an opportunity to be heard before a vote was taken on any official action. Thank you.
Just wait a minute. Shh. Just wait a minute. Just wait a minute. Would you? Would you? Would you be willing to speak for one minute? Can you speak for a minute? We would grant you that, and then we can grant the out-of-county people a minute. I'm happy to hear you say that. Well, I'm sure I won't be, but.
One minute. One minute. Thank you, Diane, for saying the quiet part out loud. You apologized. And you want us to accept your apology. But you must realize that your past behaviors cause us to doubt your insincerity. I've come here many times, so I know how this all works. And I'm still waiting for an apology to Meghan Brock and Jamie Come Walker for the way you have treated her, both of them, suing them and all of that. Your behaviors, you've called all of us here extremists, MAGA extremists, white Christian nationalists, all kinds of horrible names. The rolling of the eyes, that is the real you. So when you make that apology, I'm sorry, I want to believe you. But how can I possibly believe that? When you decided to break the law, what counsel, you had counsel telling you, "Don't do that." What counsel, was it Steve Santicero told you to do it? Are you going to let us know?
Cheryl James? Cheryl James? And biding by the one-minute rule. Please.
Good afternoon. I'm Cheryl James, and yes, I am from Horsham. The Horsham citizens are affected by your stupidity as well. I'm a wife, a mom, and a physician assistant. I am not here as a Republican or a Democrat. I am here as a legal American to claim freedom from tyranny. I am not here, I am not here to beg you to follow the rule of law. You know how to follow the law, and you chose not to. But I'm here to tell you that you are done with making new laws for us. Bucks County, the state of Pennsylvania, and our great nation are done with you, and we're done with your lies. The whole world is watching, and the lies have finally caught up to you. How do I know this? Because our almighty God is in this place today. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Do you have another person? Frank Scavo? We only have one.
That's it?
Mm-hmm.
It's almost over. Frank Scavo, Old Forge, Pennsylvania. From what I've seen today, you know, I'm glad you're here to take the heat because there's a lot of heat to be given. I had to drive all the way down here to make sure that my voice is heard so that you know, in this Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, it's happening again. It happened in 2020 with Catherine Bookbar, when Supreme Court Justice Alito said, "Don't count those votes. Set them aside." Guess what we have now? A court closer to home, the Pennsylvania Supreme Court. What did they say? "Don't count those ballots," but what's your decision? To count the ballots. That's crazy. That's crazy. But Commissioner Marselia, the statement you made that I witnessed is misinformation, malinformation, and fake news. You said what you said, and that's your intent in your heart because you are definitely counting the votes. You know, when you go for an election...
Thank you. It's only one minute. Thank you. Last one. Thank you. Anastasia Theodoropoulos? Anastasia?
Stop it, please. Okay. My name is Anastasia Theodoropoulos. I am an elected official in Pike County. Drove two and a half hours to get here. And I want to let you know that as an elected official, there should be no politics in the positions that we take. When we're elected, we're elected by our entire county, not by some, or half, or most. And being the first time that I'm here in your beautiful county of Bucks, and coming here very concerned about breaking laws in our elections because the world is watching us. And Pennsylvania was one of the worst examples in 2020. And it seemed that Pennsylvania became one of the best examples in 2024, thanks to Scott Pressler and others who fought hard. The reason why the administration won this time around is because there's a left wing, there's a right wing, and it came together through Elon Musk.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we have finished public comment. This is Commissioner's comment. Commissioner DeGrauolo, did you have any remarks today? Commissioner Harvey?
I want to thank...
Stop. No. Stop. Please be respectful. Give him a chance to talk.
Thank you. I can wait. I can wait. Sorry. I can wait.
Okay. All right, we'll take it.
I'm making a motion to adjourn. I'm making a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. So I'm making a motion to adjourn. I'll second.
Flaver?